The City of Revere Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Roll call. Mr. Bacioli. Mr. Corin. Mr. D'Angelo. Mr. Mazzoni. Mr. Tucker.
President.
Mr. Colometto is absent. First matter before the board is Application A 1411. Application of Wakefield Associates, Inc., 544 Salem Street. Wakefield requesting side yard and buffer zone variances to enable the appellant to construct a three-story mixed-use structure comprising 20 residential units, 3,200 square feet of commercial space on lots 2 through 18 at the intersection of Brookdale Street, also known as Spagnola Road, and Washington Avenue in Revere. We have a letter from the attorney representing the Wakefield Associates. This office represents the applicant, Wakefield Associates, in the above referenced variance application. At this time, the applicant requests that the variance application be withdrawn without prejudice while the project is redesigned. Should you have any questions concerning this, please do not hesitate to contact me. Corey Rhodes, attorney for Wakefield Associates.
Seeing that we have a letter, I would like to have someone make a motion to withdraw without prejudice. So moved.
Question now comes...
Roll call.
Question now comes on granting leave to withdraw without prejudice. Mr. Bacioli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
This is withdrawn without prejudice.
So for anyone in the viewing audience, that calendar item number has now been voted to withdraw without prejudice. So there's no discussion. Thank you very much for attending.
Next matter before the board is Application A 1413. This is the application of Thomas R. Ryan Jr., 135A Winthrop Parkway, Revere, requesting a rear and side yard variance to enable the appellant to construct a 12-foot by 5-foot unenclosed exterior deck on Lot 4 at 135 Winthrop Parkway, Unit A, Revere.
Is the applicant present? Please step up to the microphone, press the button, and state your name and address for the record. It'll turn green. If you press the button, it'll turn green. There you go.
Thomas R. Ryan. Thomas R. Ryan Jr.
Okay, do you have anything to add to this application?
It's a 5-by-12-foot deck at present. I just want to add five more feet onto the deck to make it a 10-by-12-foot deck. That's all I want to do.
Okay.
So I could do a little barbecuing and whatever.
All righty, well, seeing it's a public hearing, we'll ask, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any members wish to speak? Okay, thank you, we vote at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Do I stay here?
You should stay.
The next application before the board is Application A 1414. This is a special permit application of MERC Brothers Realty Trust Investment, LLC, 193 Crescent Avenue, Revere, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to reconstruct a non-conforming single-family dwelling on Lot 79 at 57 Calumet Street, Revere.
Good afternoon, could you please state your name and address for the record, if that's still on?
Yes, it is.
You're all set.
Don McDonald, Coleman &amp; McDonald Law Office, Saugus, Mass. On behalf of Mark Brothers.
Jim McCurryo, 193 Crescent Ave., Revere.
Do you wish to add anything, or it's all stated in the application?
It is stated, we just would like to suggest that the special permits, the plan, for the plan that's applied for is reconstruction of a non-conforming single-family dwelling which requires a special permit. The plan is, the photos are in the, of the existing structures, dilapidated old cottage, probably from the 20s. It's very close to the street. The new house, Jim has a picture of the new house. We didn't give you the new photograph of the new plans, but it's a brand-new two-and-a-half-story structure to fit on the existing lot. It's actually smaller footprint than the existing structure, pushed back to the sideline, to 18, to a front setback of 18 feet, and centered on the lot. And it's certainly a positive improvement to the street and the area, and it would not be any detrimental, substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure. Jimmy, that's all I have, if there's no questions.
Seeing it's a public hearing, I'll have to ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any members wish to speak? I was just, like to just state one thing, I'm impressed that you have the two vehicles in underground parking, off-street parking, so.
Okay, thank you. This was approved, this was already approved and granted in 2011, but that's been, it was never built yet.
Okay, thank you. So we vote at the end of the meeting, we'll take up the next calendar item number.
The next matter before the board is Application A 1415. This is the application of Anthony Decesary, Uguys Realty Trust, 596 Revere Beach Boulevard, Revere, requesting a side and rear yard accessory structure variance to enable the appellant to construct a 36-foot by 25-foot single-story, three-bay garage on Lot 483 at 596 Revere Beach Boulevard, Revere.
Good afternoon, state your name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Decesary, 596 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Okay. Do you wish to add anything to the application, or it speaks for itself?
Sure, just that I spoke with my neighbors, specifically my director brothers, who are home right here in support, and just about an hour ago, I got off the phone with the other director brothers who aren't here. She said she was in support, don't miss Donna Calsumaro. I answered all her questions, we agreed on a couple of things that I would plant some shrubs separating our two yards. We're only asking for one for variance on her side, side setback, and a five for variance on the Rosano's yard.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Frank X. Rosano. I reside at 593 Revere Beach Boulevard.
And your de...
And I am in favor of granting the permit to Mr. Decesary.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing on, oh, councillor, if you wish to speak.
Thank you. Just want to speak in favor of this proposal. He has taken the property, a property that was once dilapidated and fallen apart, abandoned, and made it into a nice housing development. And I think if he moves forward, it's just going to improve the quality of life in that area and enhance the beauty of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any members wish to speak? Please press the microphone. There you go.
The only question I have, I don't have a problem at all with the project, as long as you're not going to encroach on the sewer line that goes in the back, because that takes care of the boulevard. If you're not encroaching there, fantastic. Thank you.
The only other thing I'd like is just the standard protocol, no habitation and no plumbing, as it's a garage. And one of the, what, the butter to the left or to the right facing the house with, wanted the shrubbery?
If you're facing the house, to the right.
To the right, facing the house to the right, that there be shrubbery installed as a... And that's in the rear of the property, right?
The side.
The side. Okay, separating the two yards. Okay, thank you. We vote at the end of the meeting, so we'll be taking up the next calendar item number.
The next application before the board is Application A 1416. This is a special permit application of Michael Colletia, 30 Oak Island Street, Revere, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to reconstruct and expand an existing non-conforming garage structure, 29.5 feet by 17.8 feet for storage purposes on Lot 1 at 20 Arcadia Street, Revere.
The applicant, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Mike Colletia, 30 Oak Island Street, Revere, Mass.
Do you wish to add anything, or the application speaks for itself?
Only that Stephen Claman personally called me last night. He owns the building right next to us and said he has no problem with what I'm doing. He said I've been a good neighbor and a good friend, and so he's all part. Nobody else has any problems.
Okay, thank you. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any members wish to speak?
I have a question. What exactly are you going to do when you move the shed? Or the so-called shed?
I'm just going to slide it up.
Are you going to have a setback to the property line?
Yep.
10 feet?
Yep.
Just for my edification, this is an existing garage that was a cease-and-desist order was put on, am I correct? Okay. And you're saying that the setback for 10 feet is not 10 feet as it is now? So are you going to take that down and reconstruct something?
Yeah, move that shed up.
There's a pre-existing shed on, and you're talking about the lot that's from Arcadia Street, not your house lot that's on 30 Oak Island Street, correct? So you're taking the shed and cutting that down?
I'm moving it forward, it's more into my park, into my backyard.
So you're putting it on, you're moving it more towards the lot on 30 Oak Island Street? And the existing garage that was constructed, you are keeping exactly in the location that it is now, that it was built? So you're not staying within the 10-foot setback on this plan?
It will be 10-foot setbacks soon as I move the shed.
Okay, then that's not what's shown on this plan that was presented. So do you wish to continue this until you can revise the plan and... I believe so.
I own all the property around it.
Yeah, but you'd have to deal with lots. We can't deal with the whole property, because it's lots that we have to deal with. Zoning issues go by the lot, not by the entire parcel. It's not one big parcel. The property is all separated into lots. They're owned individually, they're not owned all outright by one lot. They're all individual lots. That's the issue.
They're all owned by me.
But that doesn't, according to registry of deeds, they're individual lots. Do you have any pictures with you that were supposed to be presented with the application? Any photos of this? There's no photos presented with the application as well, and they're supposed to be presented? Because it's rather confusing to some of the members, and my, not to me, because I live there, but I live in the area, but there's no pictures to show to depict this garage. The garage, you're saying, is technically attached to... You show it as being attached to the 20 Arcadia Street shed or addition that's on there. Am I correct to say that? That you're saying that that's been attached to it? It's not a separate structure? You're not calling the garage a separate structure? I'd like to make a motion that this gets continued until we have defined pictures showing that the property, as the application should have been presented, and then we can deal with it accordingly?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor and second it by... Your application, you're supposed to present pictures of the property, both surrounding the butters and the actual item in question. Seeing that this was a cease-and-desist order that was put on, it was already built. I know it's not finished, but it's still a large garage. So if we show pictures, perhaps we want to make amendments to it as far as lowering the height? That was one comment. The garage itself, of course, would have to make the normal protocol, no habitation, no plumbing, so on. But I would ask that this be continued until you can present the pictures depicting the current situation that's there and the actual structure before this is voted on. So roll call, please.
Question now comes on continuing, this is to the next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Bacioli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is continued to the next meeting.
So all you have to do is present the pictures and stuff to the... And if there's anything else missing, I'm not really sure, but you should check the application status and see if you need to submit pictures or anything else The last Wednesday would be July 30th. July 30th at 4:00. The next meeting would be July 30th at 4:00 p.m.? You'd have to send it as quickly as possible to the clerk or the Zoning Board of Appeals, so he can process that and get it to all the members before the next meeting. All right, thank you. Well, he has a plot plan, but if he shows the pictures, I don't... Do you have a plan of what you're going to build, actually? Was there ever a plan or just a plot plan?
I have a whole plot plan designed and big plot.
Well, the plot plan, but that don't show the actual structure. Did you have a plan made for the structure itself or just the plot plan itself?
I have a design with the whole thing on. Shows the building, shows everything around it.
Yeah, but it doesn't show the actual elevations of the building as it's supposed to.
It does, it shows all the numbers around it. It's approved by the zoning board.
We can have it reviewed by, so we'll have it reviewed before we make any decisions anyway. So site plan review, already looked at this and approved it? Okay, because it, I'll talk to site plan review. They normally ask for a plan for the heights and to show the elevations and everything, so we'll deal with site plan review. If they have any comments, they'll get back to you.
Okay. That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
The next application before the board is Application A 1417. This is the application of Brian Chapman and Nancy Nikosia, 176 Wilson Road in Ahant, requesting various variances to enable the appellant to construct a four-story, five-unit residential structure with a garage under on Lot 1 at 172 Kimball Avenue, Revere.
Good afternoon, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Corey Rhodes with D'Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere for the applicant. Brian Chapman and Nancy Nikosia, they're here today with us in case there are any other questions. We also have the builder here today. Our application substantially speaks for itself. There are just two points I want to highlight. It may seem like we're asking for a lot here. There is a current non-conforming structure here. This is the old Sterns hardware. We're going to be maintaining that footprint, so we're not really expanding kind of the non-conformance there. We do want to build up and put in these residential condominium units. The other piece, I really think beyond that this is an awkward triangular-shaped lot, is that this is, really should be viewed more like a mini transit-oriented development. It is literally 30 feet away from the Revere Beach Station, and we think something closer to what is in the W-TOD should be applied to this property, and it should be warranted here. They're going to make a significant investment to repair this property, and this isn't a fly-by-night builder. They're actually going to have their home at this property, so they're going to be developing it and living there. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ira Nowasowski, 53 Dehone Street, WAD 2 councillor. I reviewed this plan, and it's very interesting. In looking at it, I have, initially, I have no objections to it. I know the parking situation, that they want to do five cars under on the first-floor street level, and realizing that it literally abuts the MBTA property. But looking at it, you know, the height-wise, it's the same height as the buildings that are across the street. I look at it, you know, with the five spaces, even though we're not getting two per unit. I'm looking at it as a transit-oriented development scenario, like we did with the waterfront square, as far as parking. They're going to try and rent this property, you know, the units, two people that will have to take the T into Boston, you know, where the use of the car won't be on a regular basis. So it's more transit-oriented development scenario, and I look forward to see how it comes out, and hopefully you'll give them whatever relief they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Hearing on or closed that side of the hearing, any members? I did take a look at the property in detail, and I know that the legal counsel, you did say that these would be condos, correct?
Yes, they would, they would.
So as the deeds will go for these condos, is it one space per unit? How are they being deeded?
They would be one space per...
One space per unit. Okay. That was my only question. Other than that, I know you're going to have challenges with the MBTA, but if you can overcome them, you know, good luck.
We're willing to give it a shot.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we can go back to the first calendar item number?
The board has already granted leave to withdraw without prejudice on Application A 1411. The next application before the board is A 1413. The application of Thomas Ryan requesting a rear and side yard variance to enable the appellant to construct a 12-foot by 5-foot unenclosed exterior deck on Lot 4 at 135A Winthrop Parkway, Unit A, Revere.
Roll call.
Question comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacioli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. The next application before the...
Okay, one moment, I'm sorry, is someone speaking?
We heard an application of 27, I mean, part of the vote, and I can say something to the plans that were submitted and have been revised slightly. Maybe continue, perhaps, to submit to the board as part of the decision because of the requirement.
So there's a motion on the floor to continue this to our next July 30th meeting, so the applicant can submit revised plans? Or you could actually submit them this evening if we, if they would like to take it up? What's the will of the members?
We have a copy of the plot plan. The engineer may mistake on the parking. We do have a garage going in, but it's not for two spots, it's for one spot, and the other spot will be in the driveway.
Okay, then I, let's continue, a motion to continue till July 30th? We start at 4:00 p.m., so it'll probably be between 4:00 and 4:30. Is there a second? All members?
Question comes on continuing this matter to July 30th. Mr. Bacioli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
This is continued to July 30th.
Thank you. So you'll submit a certified plot plan and the new plans? In advance, so you want to get that to him rather quickly, so we can review him? Could I ask the applicant, on the encroachment of the, are you familiar with the main sewer line that's in the back of your property? Is that on the Mass Railway lot, or is that actually on your property? But you don't show that on the plot plan? So we have to make sure that you're not encroaching on that? On your plot plan? We don't, we only have a plot plan? We just want to make sure that we're not going to have any issues with that once we approve it.
Hi. I'm still on the third officer's desk, 4:30. Can I say something?
Opponent, proponent, come right up to the microphone, if you don't mind. Please state your name and address for the record before we close this.
My name's Donna Calsumaro. I live at 600 Revere Beach Boulevard, so I'm on the other side. They're wonderful neighbors, and I don't mind them building some garage there. I did speak with Anthony earlier, and I thought a three-car garage for a single-family house was a bit much, because it's a very narrow yard. I have some pictures, if you want to see what the backyard looks like. And I also questioned the height. The neighbors on the other side, they have huge fir trees. I don't. The neighbors on the other side, they have huge conifer trees, I don't. I have, you know, tiny little shrubs, and backyard would definitely be obstructed by probably anything back there, obviously. But I asked Anthony, who was kind enough to bring me the plan so I could take a look at them last night, if it was possible to have a smaller garage in height and width.
It's a single story, so I'm not following-
It is a single story, but it's 15 feet high.
But that's a standard garage height for a single story?
Okay, well, that's the question I asked. And also, it's going to take up most of the backyard, because I think the width of this garage is even wider than the house, because the house has a driveway to the other side of it, and this basically is going to have nine feet on my side and four feet on the other side, so it's definitely a very wide garage.
Okay, it's nine and five, and the house is 10 on one side and like three on the other, but, okay, I, thank you for making that, bringing that to our attention.
But I think they have a right to have a garage there, and I spoke with Anthony about maybe some beautification, so I don't have to look at the structure, because I've lived there 30 years, and I've never had cars in the backyard, I've never have anything, and I have a huge yard versus the other side, they have a much smaller yard than I do, and they have all of their very large conifer trees. I don't have any of that, so all the time I've owned my house, I've had a perfect view, and I know this is definitely going to obstruct the sun and the view that I have, and, but I think, you know, their design is very tasteful, and I was very happy with them, but I just think it's a very large garage for a small yard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to add, we agreed to read over the law, and I'd be glad to have trees to read over the law.
Okay, thank you. Any members wish to speak? Okay, then we will task for a roll call.
Question comes on granting relief requested, the conditions offered by the chair were no human habitation, no plumbing in the facility, and plantings along the side of the garage, 600 Boulevard side, and no encroachment to the manhole.
Okay, roll call.
Question comes on granting the relief requested, subject to the conditions. Mr. Bichilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
This is granted, subject to the conditions. A 1416 has been continued to July 30th. The next application before the board is Application A 1417. It's the application of Brian Chapman and Nancy Nikosia, requesting various variances to enable the appellant to construct a four-story, five-unit residential structure with a garage under on Lot Part 1 at 172 Kimball Avenue, Revere.
Roll call.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested. Mr. Bichilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mizony?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. No further business, the next meeting of the board will be on July 30th.